Well, it is five o'clock and I don't see Samalid. Uh, am I missing her?
Oh, we do have a quorum.
Okay, well, go ahead and get started. Um, good evening, everyone. Um, N A, if you don't mind taking a roll.
Yes, Mary Kay Muren.
Present.
Max Starks.
Present.
Samalid Hogan. Noam Roldan.
Present.
Jeff Satler.
President.
Thank you.
Thank you, N A, and why don't we roll right into our investment subcommittee report with Chair Muren.
Hey, thank you so much, Trustee Starks. Um, I attended the February second, twenty twenty-three Investment Subcommittee. And here are the highlights from that meeting. Um, Matt Fertini, a senior analyst and consultant with Fardusian, presented the quarterly investment review report for the fourth quarter of twenty twenty-two. Assets under management by Fardusian as of December thirty-first total thirty-two point five million. The long-term portfolio consists of twenty-two point six million and recognize a seven point three return for the quarter. Generally in line with the benchmark of seven point four percent. The short-term portfolio consists of nine point eight million and recognized a one point one return for the quarter, again, consistent with the benchmark of one point zero. The total value of the portfolio increased by two hundred and thirty-six thousand fiscal year to date. The college transferred six million to the short-term investment portfolio in November twenty twenty-two. A dollar-cost average approach is being used to transfer one million each month from the short-term portfolio to the long-term portfolio. This approach will be used between November twenty, November twenty twenty-two and February twenty twenty-three. The final allocation of the six million dollars will increase the long-term portfolio by four million, increase the short-term portfolio by two ma- million. And those are the highlights, Trustee Starks, and thanks to administration staff who are helping me put that together.
Great. Thank you, Trustee Muren, and we appreciate the update. Um, I know you're here covering for someone, so I definitely appreciate that. And uh.
Yes, and I want to give her thanks as well. I couldn't make the meeting as she stepped in for me. Thank you very much.
Absolutely, my pleasure.
Excellent, thank you very much. Um, it's good to see the, 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 the returns and the positive. It's a, it's a, you know, it's very, very pleasing to see. So any questions, comments on the update given by Trustee Muren? Okay, hearing none. Uh, thank you very much. Um, we'll move right on. Our fiscal year twenty twenty-three second quarter trust fund report.
Okay, thank you. Um, so we are looking at the Gen Ed Trust Fund Report. Um, and we are presenting the second quarter reports which are consistent with the trust fund guidelines. Um, and as a general reminder, these trust funds do not include state appropriations, grants, investment income per funds or depreciation. So I just like to um lay that out upfront. Um, with the Gen Ed Trust Fund, where overall the revenues and expenses are where we would expect them to be through the second quarter. Um, you may recall from the first quarter that the tuition and fee revenues are up slightly as a result of enrollments being um coming in a little bit higher than budget. Um, so that is consistent here in the second quarter as well. Um, moving down in the, the revenue section, there's a couple of items that um are showing zeros in the actual columns. Um, that includes the, the stick foundation lines for scholarship and capital funding. Um, that, any activity you would see in the third quarter report. Um, also for the proposed trustee and the approved use of reserves. Um, we're not going to reflect anything in the actuals until they're actually needed, which would likely be later in the year. Um, moving down to the expenditure portion of the, of the Gen Ed Report. Um, we're looking at um zeros for the N N construction and improvements line. Again, that's because we typically spend the carryover funds first. Um, and at this point in the stage, we're still working on spending those down. Also, on the final expense line, the I T capital projects, that works in the same regard as the facilities carryover. Um, we spend the I T carryover funds first, um, and then we'll get into this year's budget. If I can ask you to move to the next slide, please. Here, we're looking at the health trust funds and really everything seems to be in line with expectations through the second quarter. Um, for both the revenues and expenditures, really no variances in the health trust fund to call out. And if I can ask you to move to the next slide. This is our capital improvements trust fund, and again, the capital improvement, the revenues are again, um, similar to what we saw in the Gen Ed. Um, are a little bit better than budget, um, and that's due to the enrollment um increase from the fall semester. In addition, the expenditures are showing zero for the N N uh capital improvements expenditure line. Um, that's because we're spending the carryover funds first. The student fee categorical waivers line. It appears to be high. This is typically what we see at this point in the year. We are expecting some uh reimbursements from third parties, which will reduce that. Everything will work, uh, will really come close to the budget by the end of the year. So while it appears to be high, it will fall in line um with, with expectations in, and within the budget. Before I move on to the vendor expenditure report, are there any questions on the trust fund reports?
Not for me. Thanks for that clarity on the student fee uh waivers. I appreciate that. And any other questions?
Okay.
No.
You can move to the, the next slide, please. And this is our, our vendor expenditure report. Again, we just like to provide updates with any expenditures um and with any vendors um that have expenditures that are of twenty thousand dollars or greater. Um, we are identifying whether we intend to capitalize any portion of those expenses and also whether any funding came from D C A M. Um, these are the generally, you know, th- this is what we would expect to see at this point in the year. Um, there's nothing that is jumping off the page at us as, as far as, you know, vendors that we wouldn't expect to see. Um, and are there any questions on this, on this slide?
No questions.
Okay.
Great, thank, thank you, John. Appreciate the updates and we'll move on to the financial update and outlook.
Okay, perfect. So here's our cash flow projection, and you'll see that we have approximately six point nine million dollars as of the first week in February. Um, in a couple of weeks, we'll have the first spring financial aid dispersment, and that's going to bring our cash balance over eight million dollars. And then we'll continue to ride that. Um, you'll see a declining balance through the rest of the fiscal year, which is generally the trend that we see um for, for a number of years now. Um, there is one aspect that I would like to call out, and that's that, you know, this is a relatively conservative um approach or conservative view. Um, there's a couple of factors that could potentially increase the ending balance um at June thirtieth. And that's all got to do primarily with the timing of facilities projects. So depending on when the facilities projects are completed and when those invoices come in and are paid, um, that could lead to an increase in the cash balance at the end of the year. Also, the funding source that's used to pay for those facilities projects or any, any um other invoices or expenses for that matter. Um, as you may recall, the end of last year, we wanted to make sure we spent down the state appropriation. Um, it's a use it or lose it, so we'll, we keep an eye on that this time of year as well. Um, so those are a couple of factors that could lead to an increase in balance at the end of, of the fiscal year. If we can move to the next slide. And this is a summary, so this is showing um our different line items, um, starting with what our opening balance was at the beginning of the year. Um, the next column will show the actual activity, um, which is taking us into the beginning of February. What our projections are through the rest of the fiscal year and then the final uh totals for, for each line. Are there any questions on the cash flow projection?
I just have one question. How much liquidity are we expecting to use for projects of the cash that we have by the end of the year?
Yep, um, and you're, you're talking um facilities projects specifically?
Yeah, facilities and I T, I guess.
Yep, um, so I have facilities broken out as about approximately one point four million for the rest of the year. I don't, and, and again, that's um. Okay, so one point four is for the facilities. I don't have the I T number in front of me. Um.
Why am I thinking it's in the five million range for the full year, not for remainder of the year, we're just for the full year?
Is, is that for I T you're, you're referring to?
In, in total, in total.
In total for five million, that would be, yes, that would, that would be a reasonable figure in total.
Right, right.
Yep.
You, you can follow up with the details, you know, for um Trustee Sadler's question. That, that's fine, okay?
Perfect.
Any, great, any other questions? Okay, great. Move right along. Thank you.
Turn, turn it over to Andrea for the enrollment update.
Thanks, and, and good evening. Uh, so. Even though spring enrollment isn't, isn't final yet, we do have more information than we did last month. And so what I wanted to do is just give you an update. We looked at a similar slide last month, uh, but now we're able to uh. Update our projection to be a little less conservative. So just to reorient you to the slide, if you look at the, the bar in the middle, that was our approved budget. We, we budgeted for fall uh credits to be down six percent and spring to be down eight percent. Last month, um, we had, we use fall actual and spring at budget. Uh, which was the, the bar to the right a little bit, the three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollar net financial impact. And this month, we're actually improving the projection um in looking at the, the peach colored bar. Now, that has fallen actual, which is about even with last year, and then spring even with last year as well. So that's, that's ahead of budget. Um, and that's the number that um Jason has incorporated into his revenue and spending report that he'll present in a minute. Uh, so that is improving the bottom line in the projection of, of uh seven hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. Uh, we actually think this is still conservative, but we, you know, we like to, we like to give you conservative numbers. So we're going to stick with this for now, but it could end up somewhere between that peach bar and the uh, the bar to the right. With showing spring at uh five percent ahead of last year. So um, you know, we'll, we'll continue to refine this as we go through the rest of the um, the rest of the year. But I just wanted to give you this update on enrollment and then turn it over to Jason to um. Talk about the revenue and spending report. Unless anyone has questions on this, I'm happy to answer any. Okay, so Jason is next up.
Thank you. If we could go to the, perfect. Um, so this is our January revenue and spending report um with the detail. Um, if nobody has any questions about this report, we can jump onto the summary and advance to the next slide. All right, we can move to the next slide, please. All right, so as Andrea mentioned, um, our projection now assumes an enrollment of just over seventy-five thousand credits. Um, with fall actual credits and spring and summer um credits leveled to F Y twenty-two. Um, in this version, we have um a one point eight million dollar um. Favorable variance compared to um budget. We have revenues uh that are one point seven million dollars favorable. Um, and that's made up of our tuition and fees, which is higher than budgeted by one point one million. Um, and then we have other revenues which are fifty thousand dollars of indirect. And eighty thousand dollars in workforce um that make up the remaining favorable variance. We also have expenses that are a hundred and twenty thousand dollars favorable variance. Um, and that's made up of the full-time salaries. Um, that is unfilled positions of three hundred and seventy-two thousand uh and transfers to part-time and operating of four hundred and five thousand. Um, the only other change this month would be that part-time variance changed as well. Um, which are a hundred and forty-nine thousand in transfers from full-time to part-time. Um, as well as increased adjunct, which is due to the projected enrollment increase. Um, and that amount is an additional two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. Any questions?
Hey, Jason, do we have a, a, a model that we're comfortable with that will tell us the staffing level is needed for a given amount of credits?
Um, we have a model that we use for the adjunct credits. Um, it gets a little more complicated uh as far as full-time.
And the model you are using, is it, is it accurate? I mean, what, what are your, what are your thoughts about? I mean, it, it could be just a model, but is it something that you guys rely on or how credible is it?
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's pretty, pretty rea- it's, it's pretty accurate. I think it's accurate.
Okay, good to know.
Yep. All right, I guess we can move to the next slide, please.
So this is me, I think. Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, happy February. I'm good to uh jump back in with Ways and Means. Just a few opening um observations, and then I'll turn over to our CFO who will walk through. Um, a couple of comments for the materials that have been provided to the committee. Um, obviously, we continue to be quite vigilant about enrollment, and I want to share this with the, with the, with the trustees. We certainly work internally to be sure we're communicating with stakeholders, particularly employees. What does it mean when we're doing better, if you will, than our budget? But of course, we're not out of the woods with that deficit stance that we're working through. And I think, again, just know that we are working hard to, to norm for people what that means, because it helps to have the additional dollars, but things are not getting any less expensive. Uh, project and capital uh certainly are going to stack up on us. So any dollars we can hold in hand are going to be that much more useful tomorrow, next month, next year. So just know that piece. Uh, even to that point around, you see, when we have a little bit better enrollment outlook, it means things like adjunct costs are going to raise for us. I appreciate that question, Trustee Starks, even about the model. Model can be real elusive, because full-time faculty, we can be better, let's say, in areas, let's say, like nursing. Larger program for us and the ratio student to faculty are in some ways prescribed by an accrediting body. So we can model that a little bit. It's a little harder when you get into the full-time uh faculty course loads. Well, how many students are in uh those classes when you're in an open admission um institution? The different programs have very, very different considerations, both in terms of, you know, you might have eight full-time biology faculty and only one now criminal justice faculty. So there's real differences in, in scope and scale. We even provide what's called reassigned time. If you're a department chair or curriculum coordinator, you get released from some of your instructional obsi- um, uh obligations. So there's, there's a, just a whole host that are difficult to, to formalize in a model. Um, also just wanted to flag, now that the board formalized the change in bylaws. Just know two things going forward. One is that we'll need to stand up, uh, we'll work through the chair of Facilities and Capital Committee. Uh, we'll certainly, in accordance with those bylaws, want to have that meet uh one time this spring semester, and we can pick up. And probably even hive off some of these conversations to be more uh of a deep dive right there. And again, I'll work with Mary Kay offline on that. Um, the other thing too is in the bylaws, uh, what's made clear now is that the chair, uh, lucky them essentially doesn't have to come to every committee meeting. Unless to make quorum. So again, our chair was here um helpfully to provide the um outlook on the investment subcommittee. But next month, wouldn't necessarily need to come to Ways and Means uh unless there was a need for a quorum. So again, I'll work on some of the revisions given the bylaws to what, what the committee structure all looks like and, and calling for those meetings. So I just wanted to flag that. Last thing is.
We have to make sure we sweeten the pot so that she, she joins.
We'll, we'll up her salary from zero dollars an hour to zero dollars an hour. Yes, yes.
Love it.
Green donuts and coffees, right?
Uh, last thing, obviously, we continue to work diligently on the strategic plan. Uh, Betty Alexax Sisito, trustee Sisito is the liaison. So by all means, if you have questions, she continues to be that conduit uh on the strategic planning process. We really do hope to have, or your vetting and your endorsement, the final plan come April. And again, there won't be any surprises. Frankly, I hope what you find is that it actually is a tightening. That it further clarifies so many of the conversations that you all have, the encouragement that you ask of us. To really, really hone in on what our mission purposes and some of the clarity in, in those strategic priorities. Uh, again, we've had a, a consultant now for the better part of a year, Campus Works, that's been helping guide us through all that. Um, and, and we're at this point where we need to just formalize. We need to formalize how that maps and frankly, the metrics. And assessment, the key performance indicators um that we'll utilize on the backend of it all. So more to come on that. Um. Part and parcel again is just really solid fiscal planning, which again, I hope this committee sees that continues to be displayed by our, our, our uh administration and finance team. We've got a great plan. I think, again, we've got a great format where um, we're going to talk again, and Andrea, as our CFO, is going to walk through. A, a little bit more on the assumptions and the, and the forecasting, which has just been vital to us. And yes, you will see your first draft um of that uh fiscal year twenty-four budget next month. Um, so again, with that landscape, with that outlook, let me turn over to Andrea. Thank you.
Thanks. So uh, here's just a reminder of what the, the schedule is. Pretty much the rest of the, uh, the rest of the meeting uh is really a preparation for the upcoming budget discussion. So today, we'll look at the uh multi-year financial projection and then just kind of run through some of the, some of the assumptions that we'll be considering during the budget process. And then first draft in March, second draft in April, third draft uh for committee approval at the May meeting. Um, and, you know, throughout that, those few months, we'll be working to reconcile the budget. So what I'll be showing you today is, is pretty conservative. And, you know, we're already on track to uh, to get to a reconciled budget. But um, so don't be scared of today's numbers, but you know, we just want to give you, you know, give you the outlook and, and sort of the reality. We'll get to that in a minute. Um, and just a reminder that uh it, it, when we present the budget, uh, the draft for approval in May, it will include. Um, and ask of for three hundred million, three, three hundred, three million dollars from three hu- three hundred, three million dollars for reserves to balance the uh, the, the budget track Y twenty-four. And that's um consistent with the plan that was endorsed uh last year. So no three hundred million, but uh anyway, okay, so um, see, it won't be that bad. Uh, if you can go to the next slide, please.
Donuts and coffee, donuts and coffee.
Uh, so again, we, this is a similar approach to what we took last year, so um, I, I'll just run through the um. The slides here, you know, fairly quickly, but again, we'll, we'll show you the results of a five-year uh financial projection. And it, it's, it basically assumes that the way we're operating the college now is the way we'll operate it for the next five years. So, so no changes operationally. And so if we, you know, update the financial projections, um, but we don't change our operations, we'll see, you know, what the financials will look like. So uh, in terms of the state appropriation, uh, that's budgeted uh per, you know, with the D H E uh is giving us for F Y twenty-three at this point. Uh, with one and a half percent annual increases in the following years. Uh, for enrollment, uh, we're assuming that right now that F Y twenty-four credits will be five percent down. From the current projection that we shared with you a few minutes ago, and then holding flat at uh seven, seventy thousand credits. Um, for F Y twenty-five to F Y twenty-eight. So again, probably conservative, but um, that's what the model's showing as of now. For tuition fees, uh, right now, there are no uh increases to tuition or fees for all the years in the model. Uh, staffing levels are held flat at uh what we were in December. Um, at three hundred and fifty-four positions, that includes success and, and grant-funded positions. But uh, for the positions that are reflected in the um, in the scenario that we're sharing with you today. Uh, full and part-time salary expense inflated two percent per year, uh, operational and other expenses. We actually included a five percent inflation for F Y twenty-four, given the current state of the economy, and then two percent per year thereafter. And then for uh capital, facilities and I T capital, uh, we have, it's uh in the plan right now at four point nine million, uh, which is the, the two. Uh, combined uh per their plans. So the plans as they stand without any adjustments. So if we can go to the next slide. This lets us know for the same categories of expenses, what we haven't considered yet. So things that we'll look at, and we'll look at these in more detail. Uh, as we get to the next part of the presentation. So uh, the state appropriation, just a reminder, that's something we do not have control over. Uh, for enrollment and credits, we, we will, as we continue to look at what F Y twenty-three. Is projected as, as that changes, we'll update the, the baseline for F Y twenty-four and potentially uh the out years. Uh, tuition and fees, that's a discussion that, that we'll have um in these meetings. Um, and just to note that for every um one dollar increase in uh a per credit fee. With, with uh credits at seventy thousand, you know, that's seventy thousand dollars in revenue. So something that we'll be discussing, you know, uh, in future meetings. Um, for full-time staffing levels and salary expense, we'll be looking at, you know, where we can, we can um adjust those expenses, looking very closely by division. Same for part-time expenses, operational and other expenses. We, we, I talked a minute ago about assuming a five percent inflation. We could choose to absorb inflation in the budget. Um, we just haven't gotten to that point yet. Uh, in terms of reconciliation. And then with uh facilities and I T, we haven't yet looked at um. You know, changing the, those budgets either. So um, any questions so far?
I do, I have a question.
Sure.
Hi, this is. This is, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. I have a quick question. You mentioned that uh in the third one down there, that seventy K revenue per one credit fee, so that's a dollar. So theoretically, that would be like, if uh, so they had a twelve credit load, that would be twelve extra dollars?
Yeah, one dollar per credit, yep.
Got it. All right, thank you.
Yeah, my question is on the, the seventy thousand credits per year. You know, why, why are we keeping that flat? And, and the, the better question is, when we meet, can we, can we, can we have scenarios of what would happen if it goes up some? What happens if it goes down some? We can keep your base case at level at seventy?
Yes, in fact, in the next slide, I think, we'll look at sort of uh, uh, two slides, and a few slides, we'll look at different scenarios with either. Um, with some growth and some decline. Um, I don't know, Dr. Cook, if you wanted to.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I'm almost smiling, because again, you all know, we have to move on that. And so even though we wanted to show the starting point, and, and frankly, there's so many audiences, we wanted to show, at least we considered. What does another year of this look like? And frankly, it is forcing us to realize that's not sustainable. So we tried it on, this is the look before you even saw it in a budget, because we're not going to likely have a budget uh next month, even coming out of the gate, that has that flat. Just so you know uh from the starting point that we had. So we absolutely, we, we, we're going to have to touch that for sure.
I just want to point out briefly, there's, there's some formatting that isn't quite, that I'm not seeing on my slide, on the slides on the screen there, so you're missing some words. So if something doesn't make sense, ask me, um, because like that word not is in the middle of some other words. Um, so anyway, I think if there are other questions, happy to answer. Otherwise, we can, we can see the results of the um, the projection. We go to the next slide. All right, this is a little hard to see, but essentially, um, this uh, this is showing the results of the projection, revenue and expenses. Um, starting with the F Y twenty-three budget and going through F Y twenty-eight. Um, you can see that in the F Y twenty-three budget, uh, it looks balanced. The reason it's balanced is because that third line down reserves, we have the four million dollars. It's in this year's budget. Uh, we balance the budget with four million dollars from reserves. The rest of the um. The rest of the results do not have anything from reserve. So you can see that in F Y twenty-four, uh, there is a deficit of about four point nine million dollars. So if we uh continue the status coal operations with the inflation that we expect. We would have a deficit of four point nine million dollars. Uh, and if we take that out to F Y twenty-eight, you can see that the deficit grows to. we would have a deficit of four point nine million dollars. Uh, and if we take that out to F Y twenty-eight, you can see that the deficit grows to seven point five million dollars. Again, this model is conservative. And so uh let's imagine, what if this is too conservative? What if there's actually two million dollars of additional revenue that we're not showing here? We'd still end up with a five and a half million dollar deficit in F Y twenty-eight. So just something to consider. Like, as we, as we sort of move through the next few months, we'll we'll probably improve um some of the assumptions in the budget um that could carry through. But we would need quite a lot of improvement to eliminate that deficit of seven and a half million dollars. So just just pointing that out. Um, if we go to the next slide, we can look at some different scenarios. Oh, actually, this one is, although this is just a reminder of um sort of the the makeup of revenue expenses. So uh for, this is the F Y twenty-three budget, just a reminder that we uh we had uh balanced the budget using the four million dollars of reserves. Um, which the prior year had been covered by COVID relief funds, which we do not have anymore. Uh, if we go to the next slide, we'll look at a similar uh chart for F Y twenty-four. And again, are you all seeing this with no colors on on the expense side?
That's correct. Right.
Sorry about that. Um, on my screen, there are colors. But in any case, um essentially what this is showing, the important part is on the left there, because you can see that um if you look at the notes in the boxes. So in in this scenario, we have uh expenses in F Y twenty-four projected at uh fifty-four million and revenue of forty-nine point one million. So uh we have a gap of four point nine million. If we do uh bring in reserves of three million, there's still a gap of one point nine million that we need to reconcile over the next few months. So that's really the message here on this slide is that, and and just so you know, we're already working on it. We we have um strategies that are already you know, in a plan, uh and and we'll work toward that. So we're we're well on the way to um figuring out how to reconcile that uh that variance, but um, you know.
Without, without reserves?
With with a reserve. So if if.
How about, how about without reserves?
Uh, that would, that would be, that would require some drastic changes.
Like, I like to see it.
We can certainly.
Well, let me jump in, Mac, because in order to talk with a level of specificity, we'd need to talk about personnel. So we need to have an executive session. So we certainly talk offline about that, and we can certainly map that scenario. But just know, again, we'll want to talk with Mary Kate about the need for an executive session then, because that's what it will require.
Yep, understood. I think it's, I think it's fair for us to know exactly what we would need to do if we didn't want to pull from reserves. Not that we would execute on it, but I think we really need to know.
Yeah, it's, I agree with Matt.
Yeah, I like to chime in with that, too. Um, I'm looking at it over a five-year plan. At some point in time, reserves run out. So it might not be twenty-four, twenty-five, but I think within a reasonable timeframe, you get to that point where we we see that number really is to make those decisions.
Right.
And I think just just a reminder that the discussion we had last year was that we would use uh four million in reserves in F Y twenty-three, three million in twenty-four, then two million, then one million. So it was really like a five-year plan to uh ease the um sort of the 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 gradual reduction in expenses. So it wouldn't hit all in one year. And I think there's a slide on that later on in the presentation.
I think it's a fair point, Andrea, but we saw seven million um a minute ago.
Right.
So we've got a, you know, so we're out of whack.
Right. And so that's why, again, this is a conservative estimate, and it will, it will improve. We're expecting some more money from the state, et cetera. We just don't have the uh reliability to put it in front of you in this meeting yet. But
That's fair, that's fair.
Do expect an improvement over the next um, you know, few months.
Yep, totally understood. But we're talking about multiple millions of dollars. It, you know, you're not going to find that underneath the the cushions, right? So we want to make sure we we have we have just a full understanding for what we have, the flexibility we have or don't have. Right? So then we can help make decisions because dipping in reserves is um what you described in terms of a a declining reserves makes sense. But seeing a seven million dollar number, twenty twenty, twenty-eight is not too far away, right? So I mean, we're going to make sure we got our arms around what we can and can't do.
Any other questions or comments on this? Okay, we go to the next slide, please. All right. So on this slide, um, this is, this one's a little, little hard to look at in a way. So the first, um this is, this is giving us some uh a few different scenarios. So the orange bars on this graph reflect the scenario we just talked about. So uh if you just look at the orange to start with, F Y twenty-four has a deficit of four point nine million. And uh F Y twenty-eight has a deficit of seven and a half million. The blue bars represent what would happen if we actually had enrollment, if we didn't set the floor of credits at seventy thousand, but if we let enrollment decline three percent per year through F Y twenty-eight. And that results in an eight point six million dollar deficit. If we uh by contrast, if enrollment grows by three percent per year, uh that's what the green bars represent. And in that case, again, with without anything from reserves, we would end up with uh a five point eight million dollar deficit. Um, again, very conservative scenario, but even if we had another, let's say, two million dollars in revenue beyond that, you know, still um, you know, we need to reconcile on the expense side. So um in the model, uh we took a look at, well, how many credits will be required to break even in F Y twenty-eight, given the inflation assumptions? And uh it would require about a hundred and fifteen thousand credits. So that would require annual growth from F Y twenty-five to twenty-eight of twelve percent annually. Um, so really, the message here is that we just can't really grow our way out of the structural deficit. There is an opportunity to improve our enrollment. But in order to reconcile the budget in the future, we'll we'll definitely need to work on expense reductions. And that's really what we're doing. You know, this year and then ongoing, just i- ideally not too much in one year. We want to do it in a way that that doesn't um, you know, hurt the our operations and and our students. So any questions on this, on this slide?
I I do in regards to, and I think that's what you explained with the asterisk, we cannot grow our way out of the structural deficit. But there is somewhat a potential for growth in the next five years as opposed to a continued negative trend. But is that what you're pointing to, Andrea, when you're saying we cannot grow our way out of the structural deficit over the next five years?
Yes, because even even with, let's say, three percent annual growth, we still have a gap of over five million dollars. Even if it was ten percent annual growth, we would still have somewhat of a gap. So there, there isn't a reasonable growth assumption that will get us to a balanced budget in F Y twenty-eight. So we really will need to match our expenses with revenue. We need our expenses to be aligned with our revenue in the future.
And can I just ask you, that's assuming no increase in tuition or fees, correct?
Uh, in this scenario, there's no increase in tuition fees. That's correct. So that that is a potential, that is a potential lever. And that's sort of the next part of the presentation is really what are those potential levers that we can consider um that would improve this this situation?
It also assumes status quo in terms of our offerings, right? I mean, you're talking about five years from now. We could potentially layer in something that we don't, we don't offer today, right? That could, that could change this, which might mean we could, we could get more revenue, which means our expenses wouldn't have to come down as much. But those are types of bigger thinking that we need, we need, we need to have over the next couple of months. So but we get, we get this, this is pretty much status quo. We get it, we get it.
Yep.
Yep.
And again, this is, you'll see um a different the numbers will look a little better in the first draft of the budget. Um, but this is really just sort of setting the stage.
Totally with you, but a little better is not seven mil better. That's.
Right, well, and that's why we're looking, you know, the the improvements are really kind of a one year at a time. Um.
Right.
You know, and and so, you know, I I, you know, after today, we'll really be focusing on F Y twenty-four. And then also looking at changes that will carry through into the future. So it's really not the one-time changes, but what are the things that will sort of structurally change our our costs, you know, I'm like, well, we'll change our cost structure and have it more aligned with the the future revenue structure of the college. So that that's really the uh the work that we have to do. Anything else on this slide? If not, we can move on, please. Okay, so the next few slides are are really just a few of the um just a little more detail on a few of the assumptions, um few of the the assumptions in the budget. So in terms of the state appropriation, um just a reminder that the at twenty-nine million dollars, a sixty percent of our F Y twenty-three revenue budget uh is is covered by the appropriation. And you know, STIC does receive the second largest appropriation of all the mass community colleges, even though we are not the second largest community college. For us, uh all of our full-time salaries plus a few other expenses are covered by the appropriation. Um, this is really subject to a legislative process, so we really have no control over it. Um, so basically, we budget what the um Department of Higher Ed tells us. They think that they're going to um a lot to us. So um it's really this appropriation, and and we don't have a lot of um information. Sometimes we do get information, like throughout the next few months, they might give us information that tells us that we can increase the appropriation of the budget. But at this point, you know, it's it's too speculative to to do that. So we wait until they they give us uh solid numbers. Um, if there are no questions on, oh. Dr. Cook.
I I know Andrea's looking for me when I am mute. I I know for some of our longer-serving trustees, it's a little bit painful because you know you want us to be active managers, so you want to show where have you already thought, how are you already moving? We just needed to level set this for some of our newer trustees, least there be questions. For example, we put this slide in here as delicate as this is, because sometimes we don't want to draw attention diplomatically to how our support is the second largest. But there may be questions. Well, given the deficit structures that you're showing, how about we advocate more for the legislature? Well, to answer that question, we want you to know, we're still doing very well. At sixty percent, we might be the high watermark of any of the fifteen community colleges in terms of what that appropriation represents in our budget. So again, we're trying to work all the sides of this. You're not going to see a budget that has this much red ink in it when you see the first draft next month, but we 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 really need to put the foundation under all of this.
Thanks. So I think we can move to the next slide. So as we've mentioned a few times, one of the key uh assumptions in the budget will be the enrollment uh the enrollment assumption. And so for now, in the model, um, you know, we're projecting F Y twenty-four to be at the seventy-one thousand four oh two, which is five percent down from our current projection for this year. If this year's enrollment ends up being higher, that will increase the uh the projection for next year. So that could give us more revenue uh in in the budget. Um, certainly by the second draft of the budget, we should have, you know, more solid numbers there.
That 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 implies to me a straight math. Right? I mean, I mean, what, I mean, other than the calculation that says that whatever twenty twenty-three lands at is going to be, I don't know, pick a number, six point three percent of that, boom, there's your number. Now, how do we get comfortable with a twenty twenty-four number based on taking with with that math being a a indicator, but not the absolute result?
So there are assumptions that go into the, so the last, the last bullet here is that we have, actually have a collaborative group working on the um, the s- the the factors that go into the enrollment assumption for next year. So it's looking at historical trends. It's also looking at, you know, where where are the students in the high schools, uh what are the um sort of enrollment uh strategies that are in place right now? What's been working? What are we going to continue? What does retention look like? And so I'm not the best person to speak to those things. Um, but uh we, there is a group working on um, kind of getting a a reality check on what enrollment would be next year. So if we end up with enrollment, let's say, higher than the current projection, let's say it ends up at seventy-seven thousand credits. And it turns out that this group says we shouldn't be five percent down next year, we should be three percent down. You know, that will improve the numbers going forward. But right now, you know, we always start out with a more conservative assumption.
Yeah, that makes sense. I was just reacting to your your comment that, you know, if that is higher or lower, that's going to drive twenty-four. But I'm thinking that twenty-four should be, again, that should be a a a feeder into where twenty-four may land, but there should be these other factors, which I wouldn't expect you to talk to. But you know, I I I'm glad we're doing a a separate analysis to say, hey, what do you really think the number's going to be? Take, take, take the math equation. Now, I get, I get why we do that, right? And again, we should, we should look at that. But at the end of the day, I mean, seventy-one four oh two may be that, it may be that number. Right? You may say it doesn't matter where we land at. If we land at seventy-seven or we land at sixty-nine, you know what? We're, we're going to be seventy-one four oh two next, you know, next year. Is 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 based upon all the stuff that folks are doing separately from just math.
Right. I think, you know, what what's interesting, and again, you know, it it's um it, it's interesting in higher ed, which might be different from other types of businesses. Um, you know, that there's this all, uh like a comparison to the year before. And so they're doing future budgets based on this, like a percent compared, you know, percent change compared to a prior year. Um, you know, in other, I've been in other situations where that's not how the sum, but that that's really sort of the the language here around um, the the projections. And so um, that's why you you end up with a number that looks like seventy-one four oh two, you know, because we use the five percent where as opposed to a round number. But we, you know, we can, we'll like clean that up going forward. Um, but still, you know, it's, it's really the the trends, you know, the trends tell a story. And the question is, do we have a story going forward that will be different from the trend for whatever reasons we can articulate? So um.
Yeah, back, back to my, back to my model question. I mean, so so how do we get comfortable? That, again, take out the straight math, because every business is going to do some straight math, right? How do we get comfortable that we're, that based on all the inputs, and I like all the inputs in the bottom bullet, that all the inputs are meaningful, and they're going to help us drive to a number that makes sense. And it's, it's, it's those that are graduating, those that are expected to go to other institutions. What other programs are being offered elsewhere? What are we offering? What's hot in the industry right now? What do we see down the pike for where where growth is going to be from an employment standpoint? I mean, all those things that should be into, should be factors into our actual number. Right? And then, and then how can we test what we use to be able to say, you know what? You know, we think we're typically, we're, I don't know, seventy percent accurate, right? And then we layer on the math equation and say, you know, that tells us seventy percent, great, the math of it, which we take and I don't know, take, like I said, pick a number, six and a half percent. That tells us another number, we'll come somewhere in the middle. So I'm just trying to get comfortable with, how can we look at this from different angles? To be able to, to be able to, as a, as a, as a, a a trustee board, be able to say, you know what? We think that based on that, our revenues are going to be accurate, which means actions we may take on expenses all comes together nicely.
Can I say a a perfectly reasonable outlook? And yeah, even I would say source of encouragement. Well, I think I would offer in response to is this is the maddening enrollment outlook for an open admission community college. It 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 defies the ability, even with all that, because we do do that work. And by the way, we do deeper dives in internal, external, everyone, around the programmatic, the recruitment, the retention piece. And that may feel like there's a disconnect sometimes, but we do talk in great depth about how we do that work there. But again, just to give two, two, two stats, at times, we get fifteen upwards of fifteen percent of our enrollment two weeks before the semester starts. That's the model of a community college, open admission, open access institution. That is so difficult to plan for. So the margin is big, and this is why we tend to be very conservative on the front end of this. And and as much as we do think and hope, and hope is a problematic word in fiscal forecasting, that there is a little bit of a bounce back, a rebound here. We can't help but err on the side of caution, because we can certainly set goals. And I hear certainly the value work underneath that, the encouragement. Trustee Starks around goal setting, because how you then drive performance with employees. And that is not lost on me, that is not lost on our leadership team. So we do set out those. But again, if we overreach as an open access institution, the default is highly problematic. Because if you are short, it's better to be beating budget and forecast, as you see, because there's years where we were not. The tools that I have, the tools that I can uh work with you on, they take a long time. Uh, and and now we're into nail biting. So this is what's really hard about community college forecasting.
Yeah, yeah, that all all makes sense, uh Dr. Cook. And again, from my perspective, I'm not, I'm not saying that this number is too low. I'm just, I'm just, I want to kick the tires on, how accurate is it?
Well, Mac, this is Jeff. I think I I see where you're coming from. I feel the same way. I'm going to reserve my comments to the first budget. We have three months to really kick it around. I want to see what the first budget looks like for next month. And then we can do a deep dive, but I like and appreciate what you're saying, obviously, for the variables that we have to deal with. Um, you know, this is the worst-case scenario I would expect, and we will improve on it, make our best guesses.
Yeah, trustee Sally, I think that makes sense. Um, all makes sense. You know, I think, I think the conversation here should be helpful as we're starting to build those scenarios. So you think about kind of this conversation and say, okay, well, guess what they're, they're going to be thinking about, rather than waiting for that round on round two, right? Because time's going to move fast. It'll be, we'll be in the May timeframe, you know, with snap of our fingers. Right? So I'm hoping this this dialogue is helpful, you know, for when you guys are pulling together the first draft, so we can really jumpstart the conversation.
Yeah, trustee, trustee Mark, um, Mac, I also agree with you. I think kicking the tire is actually not a bad thing, because you could actually see numbers, but I agree. But I agree also with waiting this next following month's budget. And then we can actually go back and and make that decision how we should handle some of this stuff. I agree.
All right. Any other questions or comments on this one? We can move to the next slide, please. All right. So this is just a reminder, I so tuition and fees, again, this is something that trustees will vote on. Not the tuition piece, but the fees you can see in this graph that the the twenty five dollars at the bottom of each bar there is the tuition that has not, you know, it's set by the state and has not increased. This is per credit. And then you can see that we did not increase fees in twenty two or twenty three. The question is, at this point, it's a time to increase fees. And so we don't need to have that discussion today, but really setting the stage for, you know, what will likely be a conversation about fees in our the next few meetings. And again, the the graph here is showing our fees per credit. There are also additional fees, either you know, our per semester fees or fees related to specific courses, and then we can discuss those as well. So really, just this is really about just being prepared for having a discussion about fees. Any anything on this one? Not we can move to the next slide. And so this, the pie chart here is showing the the expenses. This is really the FY twenty three budget. So the expenses in the FY twenty three budget broken out by different types of expenses. We can see that salaries, so full time, part time and part time salaries, together with other salary related expenses, that totals about sixty six percent of the total budget with full time salaries being fifty percent of the budget, part time twelve percent and salary related benefits at four percent. And so understanding that, you know, in order to close our deficits, we really need to align expenses with revenue. You know, we just need to be aware of like where most of the expenses are. And we can see here that most of it is on the salary side. We also will, you know, look at operational expenses, et cetera. But we really will need to focus our efforts on the resource needs that fluctuate with enrollment, you know, if enrollment is a factor here. If there are no questions, any questions on this one? Have we seen this one before? And if we can just go to the next slide, please. Just to mention of the facilities and IT cybersecurity budget. So this is where we talk about facilities and IT capital, even though it isn't all exactly capital. So in facilities, we traditionally have the three point one million dollars in our revenue and spending plan. You know, generally, that covers the campus master plan priorities, ongoing maintenance and like emergency repairs, which we have plenty of. We also supplement that with the D CAM critical repairs funding for the next five years. So for FY twenty four to twenty eight, we'll have another eleven point one million dollars for to supplement our stick facilities capital. On the IT side, the in the in the IT capital plan, there is one point eight million dollars for FY twenty four at this point. Now, that plan was formalized in FY twenty two. Really, there's been a, you know, there's a previous lack of investment in IT. And so we're at the point of, you know, catching up, especially related to cybersecurity. So the in red there, it says four point eight million, it's really four point nine million that combines stick budget. You know, there's an opportunity for savings there. It's a lot. That's that's a big portion of the budget. But at the same time, if we pull back from that, you know, there is a risk of falling behind in terms of needed repairs and upgrades. So it's really a trade off. But I would expect to pull back on some of that in this in this budget as well.
But just 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 a point, when we talk about catch up, we're not talking about cyber, right? We you're never going to catch up on cyber. It's always constantly evolving. Right? So we should literally have a bucket of money that we know we're going to invest in cyber every single year. Right? That should be the first thing we should be doing here because without without protecting protecting that, none of this stuff matters. Right? So we should just rethink kind of how we're approaching this to make sure we're optimizing the spend here.
We're we're in some ways, the transparency I know is painful, like walking everyone through this level of detail. But it again helps to level set where we were not planning for IT and cyber. And now call it one point eight million every year that otherwise is pushing out why the structural deficit is what it is. We have to, of course, protect that budgetarily. We have to find a way to invest that amidst all the constricting, constructing that we have to do in other parts of the budget. So we just show it again, very openly. So you all see it that way. We absolutely are working to protect around that.
Uh, Dr. Cook, this is Norm. So that one point eight is earmark every year? And is there a percent growth every year? Because everything is expensive, right? As we well know, there's an increase on services. So is that one point eight stat? Or is it a growing number?
I'll say it this way. Consider it benchmarked. And again, we've got a very capable CIO who can do a deep dive if if trustees need it. Mary Kozlowski is very, very keen on what are the investments both in personnel that we have needed? What are the investments in hardware, infrastructure, software, all those other things that way? Whether it's one point eight or whether it needs to be two point five at a given year, frankly, given the timing of some projects, maybe it's one point five. But we definitely are getting our hands around this and we have a plan. And I think that's the key because in the recent past, we didn't have a plan.
All right. I think we can move to the next slide. So really, just a reminder here that, you know, over the in FY twenty one and twenty two, we we leverage the her funding, you know, extending a pathway to recalibrate the budget, the budget over multiple years. So we've had this deficit. But, you know, we were able to put aside some funds to allow us time to both potentially recapture some lost enrollment and then, you know, gradually and less painfully, like align our resources with enrollment. And so that's what we were talking about earlier about, you know, instead of making a lot of changes to expenses in one year, really spreading it out over a few years and using the reserves to help ease that transition. So again, using four million, having four million allotted for this year, we think we won't need that since we're coming out. It looks like the budget is is favorable. Looks like we're the projection is favorable to budget. So maybe we don't need the four four million this year. But in terms of the budget for next year, you know, we'll hope to you know, use three million in reserves for that. And so that's the end of this presentation, but really, you know, want to hear from you about any expectations or questions related to the upcoming budget discussions.
I guess, I mean, the dialogue we had should be enough for you to go on. I don't think there's anything else to say. Appreciate the 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 ask. But I mean, I mean, to your point, a lot of this was set up in those that have been around for a while. I've seen a lot of this, like like over almost seventy percent of our spend is comp. Totally get it. Makes sense. But it's good to get the show. But no, I think unless someone has anything else to add, I think the guidance we've given you just in the dialogue should should be enough for draft one at least.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anything else on financials? Okay, thank you, Andrea, for taking us to that. There's no old business, any new business. Oh, I'm sorry. We we have a trustee discussion on priorities and values.
That was really the
Yeah, you implied as much. We we certainly we have your outlook on priorities. And again, you have a very different outlook next month.
That's right. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. Again, no old business, any new business anyone wants to raise? Okay, hearing none. The date of our next meeting is March thirteenth. And can I have a take the role for acting and have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Is make motion to adjourn meeting?
Thank you both very much. Any opposed? I mean, none, and they will you please take the role?
Yes, Mary Kate Muren?
Yes.
Max Starks?
Yes.
Samalid Hogan?
Yes.
Norm Jordan?
Yes.
And Jeff Sattler?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nene. Thank you all. Have a great night.